Plaid Onson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadecel. Are there any changes, additions? Hearing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadecel?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. I don't see Reverend Tal Sullivan here yet, so would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's agenda, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. And seeing none, then we move on to tonight's consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item number one, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the 34th City Council on Monday, April 2, 2012. And item number two, warrant number 1253, matter of approving number 1253.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak, with support by Councilmember Plaid Onson. Any... Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadecel?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we come to tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations and presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Well, since there are no recognitions and presentations from the consent agenda, then we move to item number two.
Item number two, motion number M-20-12, matter of approving an outdoor downtown-area art show on Saturday, June 9, 2012. From 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., the 11th Annual Berkeley Art Bash will be located on 12 Mile Road between Wakefield and Tyler.
Is there a motion to approve M-2012?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman, with support from Councilmember Plaid Onson. Ms. Sessa?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I really don't have too much more to add to this item, except to say that both the Building Department and the city's Public Safety Department have reviewed their application and are recommending this for your consideration this evening. Also, we have with us Roseanne Nicolai. She is the new events coordinator for the Chamber of Commerce. So, welcome, Ms. Nicolai. I don't know if you'd like to add anything else or explain to the city council anything about the program, although I will tell you, we're quite familiar with the Art Bash. Anyways, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, just that the Berkeley Chamber wishes for you to pass this motion. We feel every year, this event has grown every year. It looks like already we have more artists than what we can fill space-wise, so we should have a great selection for attendees. So, we're excited to do this. We're excited to bring, not only this for the residents of Berkeley, but it brings in a lot of people outside of Berkeley into our city. In addition, there's sidewalk sales, and there will be also sidewalk sales on Coolidge, too, at the same time, to kind of generate more activity throughout the city. Okay? Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Nicolai? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, and thank you for coming out tonight. More of a comment than a question, just wanted to thank you for what you're doing with the Chamber and with the Art Bash. As has been mentioned, it's something that we all look forward to every year, and I'm really pleased to hear that the good news has spread and that we have such an outpouring of support and interest in participating. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The Art Bash is a signature event in the city, enjoyed by so many people in the region in addition to our local community, and we certainly are thankful to the Chamber of Commerce and for yourself leading the charge this time. We hope that you will have wonderful weather for this event. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on item M-2012?
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadecel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three?
Ordinance number O-2-12, matter of adapting an ordinance to rezone. The property described is Lot 41 of the Sunny Knoll Farms subdivision from single-family residential district R1D to parking district P1. Second reading.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 212?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa?
Council, you may recall that our last council meeting, we had a first reading on this item, and there were some items that were brought to the city council by some of our residents. I know that this evening, we do have a presentation by the CEO of the company, Margie Simmons, who would like to give that presentation. Now, before I begin, Margie, would you... Ms. Simmons, forgive me. I don't know if our city planner would like to just give a brief summary of exactly what it is that we're looking at, just for the public view, and then we'll turn it over to you to give the presentation. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening. You had read, as Ms. Sessa indicated, this is the second reading on the rezoning. This was recommended by the Planning Commission to be rezoned from single-family residential R1D to parking district. The applicant, according to a DDA parking study, is at 90 percent peak occupancy on their parking lot. They are interested in expanding, and as the applicant had indicated at the Planning Commission meeting and at the city council meeting, they're trying to get other properties around them have been unsuccessful, and so that is why they, in 2009, purchased the home directly behind the business, and now they are interested in buying the second home, and that would give them enough land to develop a decent-sized parking lot. There were some concerns about the expansion of it, and there are some structural issues with adding on to the existing building, given the foundation and the roof structure, and I think that certainly the idea of making buildings ready to be added on to, onto a second floor, is an interesting idea and something I think the Planning Commission and the city attorney and our building department couldn't look into. I think it would put us on the forefront as far as what we require in making sure that buildings can expand upward when they need to, instead of always having to go outward because the structure's just not there. And I'm available if you have any questions, or if you want to go right into the applicant who did want to do a presentation as well.
Any immediate questions for Ms. Onson?
Your Honor, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to ask Ms. Simmons to come up and give a presentation.
That's fine.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council members for allowing me to present this evening. I am Margie Simmons. I'm the CEO of SHW Group, but I just want to make it clear that SHW Group is the tenant, and I am the applicant. So, I am the sole owner of the company that owns the property. I just wanted to introduce myself, as well as my architect, Mr. Justin Weber, and he's here also to answer any questions that you might have. So, what we want to do is explain to you a little bit about who we are, what the plan is, and why we need to do what we're suggesting. We do want to address the concerns that were identified at the last city council meeting, and I also want you to know that after that city council meeting, I spoke to each of the residents that identified concerns, gave them my business card, and we've also followed up with a formal letter, and I have spoken to one resident, and that's Mr. O'Sullivan. And then we want to close with just some of the benefits that we believe that this expansion is going to provide to the city of Berkeley. I do want to leave with you the copies of the letters that I sent to the residents. First of all, as many of you already know, SHW Group is one of the leading architectural, engineering, and planning firms in the country. They've been in business for 67 years, and this is going to be our 10th year in the city of Berkeley. We've grown to over 250 employees, 75 of which are here, right in the city of Berkeley, making us the second-largest employer in the city. We are consistently ranked in the top five education facility design firms in the entire country, and our mission, as stated there, is we want to have a profound impact on education because we truly believe in how it impacts society as a whole and an individual's life. And we do this through learning stewardship and craft, and I would just like to call your attention to the two words, stewardship and craft. That's a part of our core values of our firm. It's embedded in our mission statement. We do things with quality, we do things with craft, and stewardship is a core value of our firm as well. So, sustainability is very important to us. Real quick, just some of our projects. This is the Central Michigan University College of Education. It's actually a LEED Gold building, and it also won an AIA award. The AIA is the American Institute of Architects.
Ms. Simmons, would you explain what LEED is, please?
Sure. It's Leadership in Environmental and Energy Design.
Thank you.
This is the Grand Valley State University Library of the Future. This project is targeting LEED Platinum. This is the Cooley Law School Auburn Hills Campus. It's an addition renovation project. It's also the only, or the first, LEED law school in the country. This is the Lansing Community College University Center. It's an addition on to a Carnegie Library, which is a historic building. It is also an AIA award-winning project. This is the Henry Ford Community College Science Building Addition. It's currently under construction. I just want to call your attention to the integration of landscape, as well as you can see on the top, if I can do the button right, the green roof here. And that's one of our more recent projects. This is the Western Michigan University College of Education. It's currently under construction, and it, too, will be LEED Silver. This is a very important project for Kettering University up in Flint. It is the first LEED project in Genesee County. It is also the first project in their tech park. They're doing a technology park up at Kettering University. This is the very first building, and hopefully many more will follow. This project is very important to us because it is a double AIA award winner. It won for the Metro Detroit as well as AIA Michigan. This is the Oakland Community College Levinson Hall Science Building Addition, the Northern Michigan University Fine and Practical Arts Addition, Oakland University's School of Education and Human Services, as well as their Student Center. This is the Jackson Community College Information Technology Center, another LEED-certified project, as well as an AIA award winner. This is the University of Michigan on their Ann Arbor campus. This is actually an old high school built in 1921 that we are currently renovating to where their school of education is going to reside. We did the addition at Wayne State University, their medical school, as well as their law school addition. And this is at Michigan State University. If you're familiar with the Brody Complex, it's where all of the freshmen reside. We're undergoing the complete renovation to the buildings that make up the Brody Complex, and this is just one example. Some of our out-of-state work, we are a national firm, so the Gilliam Collegiate Academy is a high school college preparedness program. This project recently won the Council for Architecture on Education Award from the AIA, which is a national award. This is the Gloria Marshall Elementary School. It's a project in Houston. It's also highly sustainable. It received LEED Gold certification. And this is the Woodson High School Project in Washington, D.C. And then another recent project is the Old Dominion University College of Education. This is going to be a landmark project for Old Dominion. It actually generates the most teachers in all of the state of Virginia. We're very proud of this project. So, that's a little bit about the work that we do. That building is the building that I purchased in 2002. That's our building, and it had been vacant for four years when I bought it. So, in 2003, we revitalized it, and we repurposed the building. That was 10 years ago, and we had 30 employees at the time. And at that time, we were DSA architects. Today, we are a positive member of the Berkeley community. As I stated earlier, we are the second-largest employer in the city, and we currently have 75 employees, and we are a growing business. We've recently added mechanical and electrical engineering to our services within the last two years, and that is where a lot of our growth is coming from. But our office space, although it is a very energetic space, it is a very creative space, it is a highly sustainable space, it is very, very cramped. So, we absolutely need to expand in order to be able to stay in the city of Berkeley, which we very much would like to do. So, a little bit about the project itself, what we're planning. This is our site right here. We are right between Berkeley High and Oxford Towers, and this is Coolidge right there. We're trying to reestablish the urban streetscape along Coolidge here, and we're trying to develop necessary additional parking behind the building so that we can expand out here to the north. And we want to do that by also being a good neighbor. So, this is just some images that we've taken of what the existing conditions are currently This is actually where one of the screen walls is currently planned, and that's what we're hoping it looks like. So, we intend to put landscaping. We want to be a good neighbor, so if we put landscaping on actually the residents' property, if they want that, if they would allow that, I think it would really make the screen wall much more decorative. So, we looked at the Cleveland pears and the maple trees that were referenced at the last city council meeting, and we sort of came up with the rendering of what it might be. But obviously, we have to go through approvals in order for that to occur. So, talking about the screen walls, it would be a masonry screen wall, and we're trying to basically screen off views into the parking lot. That screen wall will also reduce noise from Coolidge Highway, and I just want to point out that we are a professional services corporation, which means that our business hours are, for the most part, between 8:00 and 5:00. That, yes, some people come in at 7:00, maybe even as early as 6:30, and sometimes they'll stay until 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night. But for the most part, our hours are 8:00 to 5:00. When somebody comes in early, they'll park close to the building. So, the thought is that this last row, I would suggest is going to be rarely occupied. Also, we have very low use for the building, very low use for the building, in the evenings and on the weekends. So, the parking lot is going to be a very quiet neighbor. Again, we'd like to provide trees in certain areas along the perimeter to also screen off the parking from Oxford. With respect to lighting, that was one of the concerns that one of the residents discussed. We are very... a big proponent of the Dark Sky Initiative, which is a part of LEED certification. We want to reduce light pollution, and the two ways that we're going to do that is through occupancy-censored controlled night lighting. So, in other words, what we're going to put in is if someone is in the parking lot at night, the lights will come up. But if the parking lot is empty, the lights will go down. So, that makes it so that there isn't so much light in the parking lot. It's only when the parking lot is occupied. We are also going to put lens shields on the lights so that the lighting is properly directed and kept inside the parking lot and doesn't stream out into the neighborhood. With respect to the refuse enclosure, there was also concerns about, you know, the dumpster on the property. And first, I want to point out, because of the type of business that we are, that we're not a restaurant, you know, we're a professional services company, and we're also a very sustainable company, the quantity of refuse that we actually generate is very limited. We recycle almost everything from our business. And the other thing is, is the quality of the refuse. We're not a restaurant, so we're not throwing food and garbage out into the dumpster. It's basically paper, paper, like paper towels from the restrooms. But we will absolutely enclose the dumpster, and this is the best location for pickup because it also is screened then from Oxford. We did check into, one of the other residents commented that one of their issues was the timing of when the dumpster comes to be picked up was like 6:15 a.m., and it's once a week, 6:15 during the weekday. And so, we called Waste Management. I had no idea that that was an issue until the city council meeting. We called, and we found out that the reason that they pick up so early in Berkeley is because the surrounding communities all have a noise ordinance, which means they can't pick up in those neighborhoods until 7:00. And so, that's why they come to Berkeley. So, we've asked the Waste Management Company to come a little bit later to make sure that we can accommodate the residents as best as possible. Another location that's been discussed for the refuse enclosure is right here, which is closer to the building, but it would obviously be something you could see then from Oxford. So, a little bit about the building. Again, we want to be a good neighbor. Our goal is to reinforce the urban street front. The city of Berkeley is an urban community. We're trying to add on 13,500 square feet to allow for adequate workspace for our employees, and we intend to have set a goal of being LEED Silver. Again, being a good neighbor, buffering the residences from Coolidge Highway, providing for a green belt along Oxford here with trees and landscape so that we can create quiet, and we believe it's also going to improve safety because we're going to be eliminating what is currently an alleyway. So, there's a lot of students that come from Berkeley High and pass through here, and so I think that it's actually going to improve safety by opening up the parking lot. Ways of being sustainable, we're going to implement water use reduction in the new project. We're going to optimize our energy performance. We're going to use low-emitting materials, and we're going to obviously recycle the content. And one of the things that we're going to do is we're actually going to repurpose these two houses. I actually own both properties now, and we already have the rezoning for the property that sits right behind my building, and so this is what we're talking about tonight. I want you to know that Habitat for Humanity has a deconstruction team that is going to come into both of these houses, and they're going to take absolutely everything they possibly can to reuse it on Habitat for Humanity projects. So, doors, windows, hardware, appliances, cabinets, anything that they can take out of these homes that can be reused for Habitat for Humanity project, they're going to do that. The other thing I want you to know is the city of Berkeley's Fire Department is going to be using these two homes for their training exercises for several weeks. I've talked to Deputy Chief Bob North about that, and he's very excited about the opportunity to train your firefighters in these two homes. They will not be setting anything on fire, so he assured me of that. But the other thing I wanted to point out is that there's going to be no loss of residents to the Berkeley community. These folks here are tenants of mine, and I am moving them to another home within the Berkeley community, and these two, this young couple, is also going to stay within the Berkeley community. So, no loss of Berkeley residents. So, some of the benefits that we've talked about previously, I just want to reiterate, there are additional jobs in the city of Berkeley, and I know that we've told you before it's 25, but that's just what we believe is going to happen in the next few years. We really do expect further growth, and so we are actually expanding on to accommodate even further growth in the 25 jobs. There's going to be continued and increased local business patronage, and I think that that's very important. We actually went and we received 19 letters of support from local businesses in the Berkeley community, everybody from Fifth Third Bank to June Moon Furniture, J.J. Fats, Omara's, insurance agents, chiropractic clinics, dentists. So, I'll leave the 19 letters of support from the individual businesses with you as well. We believe that the expansion is going to fuel further growth and progress towards the vision that the city actually has, and it's, I assume, that it's going to increase the tax revenues. So, you're basically, if I'm adding on 13,500 square feet, I'm sure that my tax bill is going to go up, and that's just fine because I believe that that money is what is going to fuel the future investments, some of the things that I know that are in the plans for the city, or even just an updated master plan. But better signage, you know, bike paths, things like that, additional landscaping, those types of things are going to come from tax revenues. And so, I believe that by approving this rezoning and allowing for my expansion, I think that that's going to help fuel those future investments for the city. Again, I believe it's going to improve the safety and the security of the neighborhood overall. It's going to improve the sustainable environment, and we are seeking LEED Silver certification for the project. I believe it's going to improve the overall aesthetic of the buildings in the neighborhood. It's going to raise the bar in the city of Berkeley with respect to the aesthetic environment, and it's going to be a nice, quiet, professional, good-business neighbor. So, as Mr. Mayor pointed out, it's choosing between two goods, and we couldn't agree more. And I will leave you with the words of Reverend Brayley at your last city council meeting. I thought her words were very appropriate in the invocation that she had. Change is never easy, and I hope that I've inspired you to approve this request. I hope that you see the possibilities and that you have the courage to move forward in joy and not in fear. So, I thought her words were very appropriate. Thank you very much for your attention. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Mrs. Simmons?
I may, in a few minutes, I want to hear from others, residents, if possible.
Well, then, thank you very much for a very lucid and clear presentation.
I agree. It'd be nice to hear.
Are there members of the audience that I know they were here at the last meeting may wish to speak? Okay. Well, okay, we've got a resident.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Carlton. I live in that third house in. I... this is the first time I saw your plans, and I didn't want to come and see you, to be quite honest, because I didn't like the idea from the start, but now that I know you're putting a dumpster right behind my house, right behind my house. I hear them pick up your garbage every Wednesday morning at 6:15, whether I'm able to sleep in or not. I have a shed that I have to get replaced right there. You've got a stake in my backyard. I don't know... it's so ridiculous, I don't even know where to start. But I do know that there will be a loss of residents if this goes through. You'll lose me and my family because it would be crazy for me to stay, and you'll lose revenue on my house because the only way I could sell it would be to short-sell it for a drastically reduced price. I don't even know what else to say at this point because it's unbelievable to me, and nobody's even questioned our plans. So, I'm hoping that you'll... somebody will say something and not allow somebody to put a dumpster right behind my house. That's all I am.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the audience? Yes, sir?
Thank you. Good evening. Ryan Protemco. I live in the city of Berkeley, next to Kathy, actually. I voiced several of my concerns at the previous meeting, so I won't reiterate those and some of them were addressed, so thank you for that presentation. I thought that was very good to get some of those details as well. First of all, I would, I guess, encourage the city council to take note of what Ms. Simmons said in her presentation regarding the noise ordinances in other communities. I don't know if that's some sort of competitive advantage we have with Waste Management to let them come here earlier than other communities, but that might be an issue for further consideration. And additionally, I was wondering if perhaps that presentation could be put back up. I did have one particular question with the layout of the parking lot. If someone could just point out where the entrances and exits of those were to either Coolidge or to Oxford, I would appreciate that. That's it.
I would like to just respond to the first resident. We are working with Waste Management to change the time for the dumpster pickup. I was not aware that that was an issue whatsoever with any of the neighbors, and the moment that I understood, I took action. The other thing is, is that none of the plans have been approved because we have to go through planning approval. So, anything that we're showing up here is just our thoughts on this at this point. I have to get the city's approval to do anything, so where that dumpster is going to be located is something yet to be determined. The other thing I want to point out is that the stake, we had a professional survey done, and the stake is actually on our property. So, the stake is actually... that's something that was going to... is going to have to be discussed, but I just want to make it clear that I had a professional survey done, and that's why the stake is there. Justin, do you want to point out where the parking... Justin, do you want to point out where the parking, where people come in and out of the
Your current location or entrance for the parking lot, the existing parking lot, is still on Coolidge. To kind of work with the master plan, we've taken the back parking lot entry and moved it to the side near Oxford. This takes congestion off of the other entrance at Oxford. Currently, the existing parking lot will have to be here, but we'll be moving all the traffic to that location or to this point.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I could just ask one detailed question.
Okay, final question.
Sorry. I was just ordering what specifically this is.
It's existing.
The plan is a green belt? Okay. Just wanted to know.
Thank you. Any questions then from members of council or comments? Councilmember today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Simmons, for your presentation, and thank you to the residents for your comments. At the last meeting, I said I will do my due diligence, and I did, and I walked around the property. I even met with a couple of people from SHW and even seen the presentation. How many people you're helping are people involved, Habitat for Humanity, the Berkeley Public Safety Officers, your neighbors, the other businesses that support you is a plus for me, the fact that Ms. Simmons has reached out to the neighbors and is bending over backwards, in my opinion, to make sure that everyone is happy at this time. I just see positive things throughout this. I think that every neighbor would wish they had a business owner that had that much concern for them. I live down the block from Burger King, okay? And I remember when they were expanding that from Burger King to the shopping center, and we didn't even get half of the concern from the owner that Ms. Simmons is showing to the residents. And I think that's very encouraging to have someone like that in our city. And as far as the dumpster, you did say that you are going to, you know, try to find another spot for it. I do have one question for Ms. Simmons. There's been some confusion brought to my attention. You have a sign there that says "Built to Suit." Do you have any plans with that sign or?
The sign was put up some time ago, and the "Built to Suit" is not what the intention is. The SHW group is going to occupy the entire space. Early on, there was some conversation about, well, do we really need the entire space? Well, maybe not today, but we basically sort of projected out our growth, and we've decided that we need the entire space. So we're no longer going to have other tenants in the building, so that's the plan. So the sign's going to be coming down.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pat Onson.
I too wanted to thank you for your presentation. It was very thoughtful. Your work is great. My degree is in architecture, so I know a lot about these projects and what goes into them. To me, it's a little bit of a moot point because what I have to look at is not just who the current tenant is, but 30 years from now, who that tenant might be. So I think the project is well thought out. I think that great concern is being given to what's happening with the neighbors. I'm still really concerned about us implementing so many things in such a piecemeal fashion. One of the things that we're really lacking, and something that I've been talking about for a long time, is a true vision for what we're trying to achieve. And there's actually an interesting thing from the transit document we'll be discussing later that I just wanted to bring up really quickly, which of course is now going to take me a moment to find. And it was something that the City of Birmingham had put into their master plan as long ago as 1998, which shows a little bit of forethought. It said, "Every decision should lead to the creation of sophisticated mixed-use public spaces uncontaminated by suburban standards for parking and traffic." And I try to look at each one of these projects as if it's not just this one thing, but how it impacts absolutely everything and how this helps achieve the overall vision for Berkeley. And I'm torn because I do believe that what they're trying to do is put a nice project together. But at the same time, I need to realize that that's what's happening now, and, you know, are there other opportunities to achieve the same thing? Are there things that we can be doing to help them do what's best for them as well as balancing that with what's best for Berkeley? Because sometimes what's best for a business or best for a resident is not necessarily what's best for Berkeley as a whole, and sometimes what is best has a nice middle meeting point. So, you know, is there a way to look at, instead of jutting into the neighborhood, the property behind the auto company is for sale, and I realize the price isn't quite as right, but can that create the same effect and allow for the same positive impact with this project, but do it without, you know, tapping into the neighborhood? There are a lot of pieces to consider here. I talked to the finance director about how this impacts taxes in the long run, but it's not purely a dollar-for-dollar issue. There's that to consider. We need to then look at how it's going to set a precedent for projects moving forward. We need to look to some of our neighbors to learn from their mistakes. LA Fitness, perhaps, a little bit of an issue there. How the Imagine Theater brings people in, but what it did to the neighborhood and the walkability of that community in terms of the grocery store that was accessible, the seniors that they took out. So we need to be able to look at what's around us and what's happening and plan for the future. And I've gone back and forth. I continue to go back and forth, but I think it's important that we think about not just, you know, the nice drawings and some of the things put into place. We need to think about, in the grand scheme of our ultimate vision for Berkeley, what do we want? You know, in some ways saying, oh, well, it's a nice, quiet parking lot in the world of suburbia that we, you know, once were striving for seems like a pro. And quite honestly, I kind of view it as a con. Sorry, neighbors, to the parking lot. But having a large surface parking lot that sits empty for entire weekends because it's private parking and evenings, same thing, doesn't necessarily make for a vibrant community. And I just want to think about how all of those pieces work together and what this could be as we're more forward-thinking. And I think the timing of the Woodward Avenue Action Association document is really important to think about because we're on the verge, and you can see in this document that other communities have been working towards these ideas perhaps longer than we have, and we're on the verge of needing to be forward-thinking and leaders now or be left behind when these ideas literally rapidly move through via the form of rapid transit. These deeper lots, I think, are going to be needed. At some point, we are going to have to rezonate single-family homes to accommodate business and development. My home is probably on that list. I'm pretty close to 11 and Woodward. But I think we are going to need to do that. I'm not sure that we want to do it in this piecemeal fashion. So a lot to consider on this particular issue. Thanks.
Anything else to add?
Well, first of all, I have a question. I thought we did have a noise ordinance that ends at 11:00. What time does it start?
Your Honor, I don't know exactly when it starts, but I'm going to look at it. I put a note to myself to make sure. I thought it was...
I thought it was 7:00.
I thought it was 7:00 o'clock, too. I'm looking at our city planner. We're not... All righty. No one knows. I apologize, Your Honor. To the best of my knowledge, I thought it started at 7:00 a.m., but I made a note to myself to check, and I will get you an answer this week.
The other thing is, I will be supporting this this evening. Your presentation was wonderful. I appreciate it. I appreciate the time you've taken with the neighbors and all that you have done to adapt to their concerns. And I think you are going to have really wonderful business.
Thank you. Any additional comments from members of council? Yep. Proton Turbrat.
I don't want to reiterate everything that I said at the last meeting, which is why I'm kind of was waiting back here, but since it seems like a lot of my colleagues have the same opinion, I figured before we went to a vote. As I mentioned at the last meeting, this project for me is not about necessarily even this specific project. I have no doubts that the SHW group is going to put together a magnificent building, LEED certified. It's one of the jewels of our city as it is. That was not my concern, and I share a lot of concerns that Councilmember Pat Onson kind of mentioned, or some way, some of the same concerns you mentioned, not exactly the same thing.
I mentioned a lot of them.
There were a lot of concerns. Mine, it's like I said before, I don't, I'm not big into the whole spot zoning things and projects come up. In this particular project, I have no concerns with the plans at all, but we do set a precedent when we say, yes, we're going to start spot zoning things, and we're going to change this one, and then the next one comes up, and then we've got to do the same thing over again, and I'm going to find myself in the exact same predicament, which is, I don't, I'm not in favor of that. I'm not in favor of having a vision that says that, you know, we kind of take each thing as it comes and kind of let things encroach into neighborhoods in certain places and don't let businesses encroach in neighborhoods in other places or parking lots as were in this particular case. And that's my, I mean, that's my big hang-up. I mean, it's not that I haven't thought about this and wanted to support it because I do think that the building is going to be great and the business, everything you do. And like, as I said before, I work right across from you. I look at your building all day. But it's, for me, it's the precedent that it sets in our city and what I want Berkeley to do or to look like in the future, and that's why I haven't changed my opinion on this. And I won't be supporting it, not because I don't support the business, but because I don't support the way that we are attacking this rezoning.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Councilmember Baker.
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. Again, thank you all for a terrific presentation and for coming out tonight. I did find it very informative. I appreciate the care and the care that you put into this, the quality of the materials that you presented. I agree with the two previous comments in terms of my concerns, not specifically for this particular project. I do share their optimism both for your firm now and in the future, and if this should proceed, we look forward to continuing that growth. I think, again, it's more of the precedence and the way in which we're going about this, which is an opportunity for us more systemically to take a look at. I will be siding with the residents on this one as well, but having said that, I do think that the, you know, the next steps of the process, should we proceed, we'll be able to, again, continue that communication opportunity that you started, and I want to thank you for that. As we talk about the site plan, you're exactly right. These are sketches on a wall that most all of us are seeing for the first time. That's the beginning of the next stage of the process, right? The site plan discussion is to ensure deep, engaged public dialogue in terms of the vision for the region, given the way this may end up working out this evening, to see how we can address the additional issues and questions. All right, because, again, in the course of the material that you presented tonight, I believe you addressed many of the concerns and questions that were addressed, and I want to thank you for that. And to the transit point, sure, there's certainly, there's a, you know, a nice big open space there with, it'll be unused a lot of the time, but at least some of the principles, like the parking behind as opposed to parking in front, obviously, given the placement of the current building, it'd be tough to put a whole lot of parking in front, but at least we're taking steps there. And I do celebrate the care and the consistency with which you put the environmental aspects of this with the LEED approach. I think it's terrific, and so, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. The chairman of the Planning Commission, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you. I'd like to just address a couple of issues. The one that was brought up in the last meeting was the idea of how the city looks at parking when we are doing businesses and rezonings especially, because we've had a lot of them come before us about dealing with parking and having to provide additional parking for the various businesses that we create within the city. And I've been on the Planning Commission since 1994, and in that period of time, I came to the conclusion that what we should really do is draw a line down the city and say, okay, here's business, here's residents, and here's the parking. And I presented that before the Planning Commission. I even went before a previous council and presented the idea. And believe it or not, the council sort of agreed to it, but we never got there. When we did the master plan, the issue was brought up again. Should we draw a line in the sand and decide, here's where parking will be, here's where the residents will start, and here's where the business? Planning for the future. I have been shot down on every time I've brought this up with the Planning Commission. My other eight colleagues throughout, since 1994, don't agree with me on that idea. And I have to say, after listening to all of what's been transpiring, I have flip-flopped. I've actually gone back and said, I know that's a statement that's in vogue nowadays with all the politicians going on, but I think you have to take each business as it expands, each commercial enterprise as it wants to expand. I think you have to take it because they're all different. There's nothing alike. There's no two things alike. What the Shaw Group wants to do is something probably totally different than what somebody else wants to do. We might have to put a driveway in for a drive-through for a restaurant. We might have to put a drive-through. Geez, some funeral homes even have drive-ins where you can drive and view the deceased. I don't know what's coming. And so I think you have to take each case as it comes, and that's essentially what the Planning Commission has been doing. We're letting the economy drive it, and we're letting the developers and the commercial owners tell us what to do. And in the end, maybe not having that line, maybe that's too sterile a solution to the problem. And what we need is the vagueness and the in-and-outs. It creates more of a dynamic city. And so I like the way it is. Yes, it's difficult, but at least everybody gets a say in it, and we're not saying to certain people, someday we may have to take your residents for parking. We don't know, but we might have to. We just let it come as it comes, and I think that's the way we should look at it. And I've been agreeing, for once, I agree with the other eight members of my Planning Commission. So I just want to lay that out in the opening. The city has been laid out, you know? We developed pre-Real World II and post-World War II, and the car, the automobile, was not as important as it has become in our And the car, the automobile, was not as important as it has become in our daily lives today. Yes, we should look at bicycles, and we should look at walkability. Those are all the issues that we need to bring to the table. But we have created a much more mobile society, and that plays both ways. One, for the people in the city going elsewhere to do services, and it also works the other way, bringing other people into our city to appreciate our services. We are very fortunate. We have a developed downtown area. There's a lot of cities and towns that are crying for what we have. And we just needed to keep plugging away at it little by little, and yes, it's going to change, but change comes slow. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the historical perspective. Mr. Sessom.
Counsel, I do have an answer to your question regarding the time. And our city clerk looked it up on our ordinance. It starts at 7:00 a.m. So I will, I will talk to our company and see where they've gotten that number, but we do start at a.m. as well.
Thank you. Any additional comments before we... Councilmember Platt Onson?
Just a quick follow-up to that. I think we are part of a mobile society, but all data, all trends are showing that the next generation is going out of their way to choose more urban environments. And if we want to stay ahead of that curve, we need to think about that in just a very organized fashion. And we are going to have to look at things as projects come up, but you need to have a very specific vision and then evaluate those projects against that vision, as opposed to evaluating those projects one by one. I have a lot of coworkers that moved to the area for this particular job, and I serve as their personal tour guide, because many of them don't know what's interesting about the area and are having problems finding what is great about the area. And there are many of them now that are already sort of talking about where they'll go next, because they aren't planning to stay. They haven't found anything that really competes with other urban or semi-urban areas. And we need to think about that. We can't compare ourselves to ourselves. We need to compare ourselves to what we're competing with for future talent. So that was just my little follow-up. I do think we need to be looking at each project, but we need to be working towards something as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I will not recite my views again, as I did at the last meeting. I agree with my colleague, Matt Onson, that people move, but so also do businesses move. And I want to ensure that this nationally renowned business stays in our town, so I'll be voting in favor of this. If there aren't any additional comments, then Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
No.
Baker?
No.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
No.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you all, and thank you for being here and contributing to the discussion. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Yes. Public hearing, matter of conducting a public hearing on the reprogramming of community development block grant funds for sidewalk ramp reconstruction and for a traffic study.
Very good. I'd like to call to all of the public hearing on this topic. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this topic, now is the time to come to the microphone. Mr. Sessom.
Mr. Ware, if you'd like, I'd be happy just to explain exactly what it is that we're considering.
That would be helpful.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, you know, we're discussing community development block grant funds, or CDBG as it's known, and we have to follow federal rules and guidelines which have been set by the Housing and Urban Development. They are the primary department, or federal department, that oversees the CDBG program, HUD, as most of us know it. So we are now holding a public hearing to recommend to the city council and to receive input from our residents as to how we are going to be expending these funds. Now, the first one, and I want you to know that this is a dual public hearing, because there are two items that we're considering. The first is for the reprogramming of sidewalk ramps. Originally, in 2009, we had set aside some dollars to spend some installation of sidewalk ramps along Greenfield between Webster and 12 Mile. Now, the good news is that we have done this, although we, but we used other funds in order to do them. We had some other monies that came about because of various reasons, so we did implement and made those improvements. However, we utilized other funds. So now these funds are now available. But like, every time we use federal funds, this public hearing is required so that we can transfer those funds to another program. We are still recommending that these funds be utilized for sidewalk ramps. However, this time, we're recommending that they be used for the 12 Mile and Coolidge intersection. Every time, under federal law, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Vanson and Mr. Schuler, every time we make some improvements to any of our streets, if we are not in compliance with the handicap ramps along our roads, we must make them in compliance to the latest rules and regulations, and those rules change on a regular basis. So once we do this project, then we have to make sure that the sidewalk ramps meet in accordance to the law. So we're asking that these funds go from Greenfield between Webster and 12 Mile and move them over for the use of ramps along 12 Mile and Coolidge. So that's the first item that we're asking. And the second item, here again, back in November of 2010, the city council had designated some funds in the amount of $9,256 to go towards the funding of a master plan update. Now, we were hoping that we would continue to use CDBG funds in order to help us do a master plan. However, two things have happened. One, CDBG no longer allows the use of these funds for the, to do a master plan update. And number two, the money that we've allocated is really not enough, in other words, to do this plan. In the future, we'll have to take a look at other funding sources in order to do this. However, the planning commission did review this, and they felt that the plan that was adopted, and I'm talking about the master plan, that was adopted back in January of 2007, is still relevant. So they're not recommending for any major changes, at least not at this time. So now, since these funds can no longer be designated for the use of a master plan, and the monies that we've set aside is not sufficient, we are recommending that instead we use these funds to conduct a traffic study along Coolidge Highway. You know, many questions have come about on how this street is designed, and we'd like to conduct a traffic study to take a look at it, see what we can use it for, and also look at traffic calming around that area as well. And if anybody has any questions, I'd ask our city planner to assist me and our director of public works, Mr. Dirk Schuler. Ms. Vanson?
Do you have any more questions? It's a pretty thorough summary of my memo, so if you have any questions. We had master plan money designated, but this is one of those funds. When you hear Congress cutting discretionary spending, that is very much money in CDBG. And so the money got cut to the amount, instead of 9,000, it was down to 7,600. And then last year, we were told, yeah, no more planning money, period. So this is our last hurrah, as it were. And I think it can do a modest traffic study. It's not going to pay for additional counts. We're going to have to go with what SEMCOG says is on Coolidge. And, but I think we can see what, if anything, we can do to Coolidge Highway, because I know we've had lots of ideas about it, and we have business owners that are concerned, and we have public safety that's concerned, so let's figure out what we can do. And the sidewalk ramps, we're just moving it from here to here.
Very good. Are there, before we leave this public comments section, are there any, anybody else in the public want to address this? If not, then we'll close the public comments section, and Ms. Prince, would you read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M21-12, matter of directing the city planner to prepare a reprogramming request for the 2009 community development block grant funds to provide for sidewalk ramp reconstruction at 12 Mile and Coolidge intersection.
Is it a motion to approve M21-12?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekla. Now, Mr. Sessom.
Counsel, I really don't have anything else to add, unless you have any questions.
I'd just like to add that the council members of the council have lengthy explanations in their packages regarding these funds, so that they have studied them and are probably ready to vote on this. Are there any questions? I see that. No discussion. Ms. Prince, please call the roll on 21-12.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, could you read number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M22-12, matter of directing the city planner to prepare a reprogramming request for 2011 community development block grant funds from a master plan update to traffic study.
Is it a motion to approve M22-12?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessom, is this much the same?
Yes, Your Honor. Any questions?
Any additional questions, Councilmember Baker?
More, thank you, Your Honor, more of a comment on both of these items. Thank you guys for really staying on top of this important fund. As our city planner mentioned, these important funds continue to be diminished, and the impact on the city is tremendous. And the amount of work that goes into ensuring that the funds are properly allocated and directed where they're needed most, I think, should be recognized and thanked. I chose to say that on this one, because I'm also grateful that we had the opportunity to do the planning study on Coolidge. As has been mentioned, there's a considerable amount of conversation and discussion and interest. I've also been talking with the business owners, both for a previous item on the agenda tonight and for comments to come. And there continues to be a great interest in seeing what's the potential, right, to see what the possibilities are. There's lots of ideas. Some of them are of various degrees of doability or feasibility on a spectrum, and this will really help us get some facts and some information on our side here so that we can make an informed decision, whatever that may be. And I think that's the value that a study like this could provide. And again, I want to thank our city planner and all those involved in providing us with this opportunity to do just that. So I'll obviously be in support of this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. The question for Ms. Vanson, I see we got the amount of $7,637. Is that enough to realistically do a traffic study that will tell us something?
Well, we spent about $10,000 when we looked at the Woodward and 12 Mile, whether the medians could be widened or not, and looking at the traffic counts. So, you know, we're going to put it out there, and I think that planners and traffic engineers are hungry these days, and I think we will, we'll see what we can get. And I think if anything, we'll have some, we have so much right of way, and we need to put so much into it, and let's see what traffic calming measures can help us out.
Okay, I was just concerned that we want to spend this money and get something that's not useful to us.
Oh, absolutely. Well, and if I may, this is, we would send out a request for proposal. We would get proposals back. Mr. Sessom and I would look at them, along with our public works department, and see what's going to be the best fit. And if they're all not going to help us out, then we won't spend the money. If we think that one is going to really be able to tell us some answers, then we would recommend it for city council.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good. Thank you. Anybody, Mr. Sessom?
One more comment, Your Honor. If perchance, you know, the amount is a little over, whatever, obviously, we'd have to come back and make an adjustment, but again, it would be something that we would have to recommend, and we would come back to the city council for that.
Thank you.
Very good. And Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M22-12?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And Ms. Prince, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M23-12, matter of appointing Gary Makovich as the city's hearing officer.
Is it a motion to approve M23-12?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekla. Mr. Sessom.
Counsel, I understand that this is a mayoral appointment, so it's under the recommendation of our mayor. Just to give you a little bit of background about Mr. Makovich.
Makovich.
Makovich. He is an estimator supervisor, and I believe he is also, if I read this correctly, the owner of this, of his company called Charles L. Pugh Company. He is, he's been doing this for quite a number of years. He is a U.S. resident, although he is not a resident of the city of Berkeley. But in this case, Your Honor, it is not a requirement that they be residents of the city of Berkeley. He'll be serving as a hearing officer. You see his background. He has quite extensive background in this arena. Currently, he works with the city of Hazel Park, doing the same type of work that we're looking at. And I believe that he has gotten a favorable review on his work as well. I don't know, Ms. Vanson, if you'd like to add anything else on this gentleman?
Well, as he indicated, he apologizes he couldn't be here, but his business is 24-hour doing insurance repairs and so forth. I worked with Mr. Makovich. He was, when I was working for the city of Hazel Park and the city of Berkeley, he was a Hazel Park resident, and he was the chair of the Zoning Board of Appeal. So I worked with him a lot in that regard, runs a very good meeting, knows the building trade. And then he moved out of the city, so we had to find another chair. But he then became the hearing officer for the city of Hazel Park and continues to do that. Our building official, when he was doing the nuisance per se hearings in the city of Hazel Park, also gave him very high marks, and we had Joe Tomzak up until recently, who was appointed by Mayor Mooney, who was a Southfield Building Inspector. And Mr. Tomzak retired on me, and I can't find him. I called the city of Southfield, and when it came to my attention that he had retired, and I understand they won't give out information, but I said, well, if he's still interested in serving, he could certainly still do that. But I didn't know if he had retired to Florida or what have you. And she said, well, I will get ahold of him and have him contact you if he's interested, and I'm still waiting to hear, so I've been left. So Mr. Makovich was willing, and you have his resume, and he would be a good asset to the city of Berkeley.
Thank you. Any additional discussion, questions? Councilmember Platt Onson?
Just for the interest of public and everyone, could you explain what a hearing officer is?
Oh, yes. A hearing officer is provided by state law, and it is the way that we go through what's commonly known as a condemnation procedure. If a building is identified, these are not just buildings that are unsightly. These are buildings that are deemed as dangerous or are in some way that the weather is going to, weather or structural defect is going to cause the building to collapse soon. We've only gone through about four or five of them since, under my tenure, we arrived that we needed a hearing officer. And we've only actually gone before council one time for a condemnation. Every other time, we've been able to get the house torn down or get the issues remedied administratively and not have a recommendation for demolition brought before council. But that is the hearing officer's job. They are the one that presides at the hearing. And essentially, if you think of it like court remediation, you have the city on one half saying, the building needs to be fixed, and you have the property owner on the other side saying whether they're going, whether they can fix it, when are they going to fix it, or if they're not able to, then how we're going to remedy the situation.
Thank you. Sure.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional questions? Saying none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M23-12?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And Ms. Prince, would you please read item number eight?
Motion number M24-12, matter of authorizing the planning commission to distribute the Woodward Avenue Transit Oriented Development Corridor Study for South Oakland County to surrounding communities and underlying agencies for comment in accordance with the Municipal Planning Act.
Is it a motion to approve M24-12?
Motion to approve M24-12.
Approved by Councilmember Baker, with support for Councilmember Platt Onson. Mr. Sessom.
Counsel, you know, as you read the memorandum that was put together by Ms. Vanson, you can see that the planning commission has done a lot of work already on this. Beginning in February, they took a look at this plan, and they reviewed it, and they met with LSL Planning to discuss it. Then, at its March meeting, they again looked at it again, and they moved to set a public hearing to consider adopting this study as part of the city's master plan. Because this study involves numerous jurisdictions, in order for the city council or the Planning Commission to consider this plan, it needs to go first to Oakland County for review and also to other jurisdictions as well for, for review and comment. Once that comes back to the city of Berkeley, then the Planning Commission holds a public hearing and hears the comments and input made by those various communities and entities. Now, staying in line with, with this issue, you know, one question that, as you, as you hear this, transit-oriented development, you know, what, what is that? What exactly is that? I wish I could just put it in a nutshell, describe it, but I think in the introduction of the plan itself, and I believe the city council received a copy of it, you take a look at it, and again, this is just for the public view. Transit-oriented development, or TOD, it uses land use to encourage use of public transportation systems through directing certain types of development to transit corridors or nodes and compact site design. It involves pedestrian-friendly development that includes mixed-use landforms and increased accessibility for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users. TOD, as the acronym that's used for transit, transit-oriented development, is an attempt to provide compact, walkable communities with a heightened sense of place. TODs typically involve uses that best support transit, transit-friendly site-building design, a mixture of uses clustered around a transit stop or corridor, and a walkable environment. So that was, I think, the best description that just gave it in a very short description of what TOD is all about. So all we're asking this evening, Your Honor, is to, is to concur with the recommendation that we, that we now move it to its second phase, or to the next phase, and receive comment from, from Oakland County and our surrounding communities. And this is done in accordance with the Municipal Planning Act.
Thank you. Any questions or additional discussion on this? Mr. Sess again?
One more thing, Your Honor. I apologize. I, I'd said to Councilwoman Baker that I would ask him to further comment on this. I know that he's, he's been working very hard on this, on this plan. So, Councilwoman Baker, I apologize. Turn it over to him, sir.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mrs. Sess. And again, I'd like to thank our city planner and our Planning Commission for all the work that they've done. There's been a strong team effort to, to get us to where we are today. And I'm really pleased that the city of Berkeley is going to take this step forward on behalf of our colleagues on this quest here to raise the visibility of this material and help continue advancing the conversation. This is a copy of the document that we're talking about here. It is meant to be a conversation starter or an enabler to additional dialogue. It's meant to provide principles and guidelines and thoughts and recommendations. And what I'd like to do, just for, just for a brief moment, is, is take a step back and talk about how we got here and the nature of this document and what it means for us to, if we were to move this forward this evening. Several years ago, representatives from many communities up and down the Woodward Corridor, in the spirit of the W-5 initiative, sought to find ways to have even stronger working relationships with one another along the corridor and collaboration opportunities, whatever they may be. And in the course of some of those early conversations, the notion of this shared asset that we have, called a Woodward Avenue, continued to come up. It's a nationally-recognized all-American road, and it comes with it some historical significance as well as day-to-day practical use. There's folks that live on that street, that work on that street, that ride on that street, and continues to be a treasured asset for us all. So we thought, what greater way for us to work together as a region and talk about an asset that's important to all of us at the same time? And so, as was described, we thought we'd take a look to see how to improve the land use, encourage economic development opportunities, and in essence, to, to help transform Woodward. So what we did coming up on two years ago now was put together a Transit Oriented Development Task Force, a TOD Task Force. We chose to name that task force Transform Woodward to kind of help inspire ourselves and to remind ourselves what it is that we're here to do. The members of that task force include representation from cities such as Berkeley, Birmingham, Ferndale, Huntington Woods, Royal Oak, regional partners including the Detroit Zoo, the Beaumont Hospital System, Oakland Community College, and other partner organizations including the Suburbs Alliance, Woodward Avenue Action Association, SMART, SEMCOG, the Michigan Department of Transportation, Detroit Department of Transportation, the FTA, and others. We're all involved on this, this task force to talk about Woodward Avenue. So that's a lot of folks from a lot of different backgrounds coming together over a shared asset in the spirit of cooperation and collaboration. In the course of that time, we did a series of community outreach sessions. One of the more recent ones for this particular document was held last fall in October. Our partner in community, Birmingham, held a session where representatives from all across the region came together to hear about this document and talk about its, its future. So, as was mentioned, this document's been worked in an open forum for, for quite a while now, and we're really pleased to see how it's come together. This document, as was, as described, does talk about parking capacity, bicycle transit, road diet, safety regulations, creating a pedestrian environment that encourages a greater sense of place, a sense of community, which is basically, you, you want to be there. It's not something that you look forward to leaving. It's a place you want to come back to and be a part of. The document offers a series of transit-oriented and transit-related recommendations for safety, as was mentioned, for zoning, for parking, transit frameworks, and for future cooperation and consolidation opportunities. What this plan does not do is it does not lock us into specific details, and it doesn't rule in or out any key decisions. Rather, it offers a framework or guidance on how to think about those kinds of things and offers some suggestions and scenarios for groups like us to consider. So what's next for us? If we were to approve this, what would this mean for the city? What would this mean for our task force? This document has been reviewed and what's called accepted by other communities in our, in our area here. Accepted means they say, "Yep, this is great. We like it. You know, carry on." What we're looking to do here is take that next step. We're looking forward to carrying on and seeing how to formally embrace this as part of our master plan document. And so that's what this, this step in the process here is here today, is for us to give the, you know, if this were to proceed, we would give the green light to our organizations here to advance this at the county level and around town to ensure that it has the proper feedback and, and interest and conversation and hopefully support so that we can move forward with this. It would help us continue to raise awareness and conversation and agreement and shared action on this treasured asset that we all appreciate on so many different levels. So with that, again, I want to close by thanking all the tremendous work and support from within the city and across the region to help get us where we are today. If this document does proceed, it obviously will be made available on our website as well for folks that are interested in looking at this. And we look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions for Councilmember Baker? Councilmember Stedman?
I just was wondering, like, how many, how much of a distribution would this be, and how costly would it be?
As far as distributing it to the underlying agencies?
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's negligible. It's just a matter of copying it and sending it out to a letter. We did the similar thing with the multimodal transportation plan that we've been working in. That's all.
Mr. Sess?
I believe, Your Honor, that it's, we did post it on our website already, so if residents want to take a look at it, it's, they're available. It's, it's available to them right now. But I'll double check, because I know we did this quite a while ago.
I, we did the multimodal plan, for sure. This one's different, yeah.
All right. I'll make sure that we do that.
Synergy.
Yes. Thank you. I'll make sure that it gets there.
Thank you. I know Councilmember Baker just casually said that Woodward Avenue is an all-American road. And I suppose everybody thinks their road is an American road. But the fact of the matter is there are only about 35 roads in the country that are classified as all-American roads. So it is actually in a pretty elite class. And it is, because of that, and I suppose because it is ours as well, it is an asset. And so I applaud everybody involved in this TOD, and we need to move forward to the next, to the next step. If there aren't any other comments, then we will call the roll.
Kadek?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard? Blanchard?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes. Ms. Prince, would you please call item number nine?
Resolution number R-18-12, matter of approving a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing regarding the proposed operating budget for the city of Berkeley, Michigan for fiscal year 2012-13.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 1812?
Move to approve. Support.
Approved by Councilmember Kadek, with support by Mayor Protam Turbrack. Mr. Sess?
Your council, I know that many of our residents out there, they don't like to come to public hearings and things of that sort. But this is an important public hearing, so I encourage everyone out there to, if you have some time, either watch it on TV or whatever, but do listen to, to this public hearing in particular. And the reason I point, point that out is because this is our public hearing to, to discuss our budget, our proposed annual budget for the city of Berkeley. Now, this request is being made in accordance with two, two different laws. The first is the, the state compiled law, MLC, which is section 141.412. Then, and also, this is in accordance with our city's charter, section 9.3. It also recommends that we, we hold a public hearing regarding the recommended operating budget of the city. We are asking the city council to please hold this public hearing for Monday, May the 21st, 2012. Part of this recommendation is that the attached notice that's part of this public hearing also be published in a local newspaper. And we're hoping to do this with council's permission on April the 21st. And this way, we'll be able to meet state and city charter requirements. Your Honor, having said that, I'd like to ask our finance director to see if there's anything else he'd like to add. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Mrs. Sess. No, I have nothing further to add. You covered the ground nicely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on this topic? It seems like a pretty open and shut item. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Ms. Prince, would you please call, read item number 10?
Motion number M-25-12, matter of approving the purchase of a 2012 water utility van with waterline boring tool for a total cost of $137,981 to the lowest qualified bidder, Wolverine Freightliner, located at 107 South Grosebeck, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043. The expenditure is chargeable to account number 592-536-985-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-2512?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sess?
Council, we are recommending this for your consideration, but I'll ask our Director of Public Works to please review with the city council the, the bid process that we went through and to discuss exactly what this vehicle is, is to be used for. Mr. Schuler?
Good evening. We publicly bid this vehicle here a few weeks ago. It is a water utility van, although it's similar to a bread truck in how it looks, like a UPS van is kind of what it's going to look like. Very robust, used on water main breaks, water service installations, catch basin repairs. It's essentially a tool truck for our water service department. And it's replacing a 14-year-old Chevy cutaway van with thousands of runtime miles, basically hard miles, no different than a police vehicle. It doesn't have a ton of miles on it, but it runs quite a bit. And the newer vehicle will have a generator that will cut down on that runtime. It will actually run off the generator. Cities of Allen Park, Taylor, there's a bunch of cities that have similar vehicles. Our staff went out and visited those vehicles prior to my start in Berkeley, and this was the type of vehicle that they decided upon based on talking to those other communities. We had a trade-in allowance in the bid as well. I figured that was a good idea, just to at least get a price for the current vehicle, although the price that we received was, was very low. They obviously had no interest in the vehicle. So upon your approval and upon delivery of the new piece of equipment, we will go to public auction and take that old, the other vehicle to auction. I expect to get anywhere from $5,000 to $8,000 for that vehicle. Funds have been appropriated under the water sewer account, and I understand this vehicle was budgeted for in prior years and was held off. But we'd really like to get this vehicle in prior to the next winter season when we have the water main breaks. Our staff have been bugging me since I started essentially that they really needed this vehicle as soon as possible, and that it was something that was held off for a number of years.
Thank you. Any questions? Mayor Protam Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schuler, normally I'd be concerned with only getting one actual bid. I mean, we received two, but one was a no bid. However, the fact that this comes in under our price point, and especially with taking the other vehicle to, to auction instead of the minuscule $750 that they mentioned here, I'm much more comfortable with it. But do you have any idea why? I mean, is it just tough, or a competitive business, not a competitive business?
It's a very specialized vehicle. To be perfectly honest with you, there just are not many folks that can complete this vehicle. So we, we knew that going in. I was hoping to get at least another bid, though, just to compare it to. But we knew going in that, that it was a very specialized piece of equipment, so I did not expect many bidders. I was hoping for more than one. Given the price point was within the budget that our predecessor, my predecessor, had set, I felt comfortable that it was worth bringing forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schuler, what's the order to showtime on this thing? How long do we have to wait for it?
They've told me anywhere from three to six months to take delivery of the vehicle, you know, depending on when I gave them authorization. I'm hoping for sooner rather than later. Again, we want to get the vehicle in prior to the winter season. That's our hope.
After you get it, how much time to outfit it to your needs?
Very little time. We're going to hopefully work with one of our neighboring communities on the decals on the vehicle. We've worked with the city of Royal Oak before assisting us with that. Really, that's the extent of the outfitting that would need to occur.
And what's the GBW?
This one is around 30,000 pounds total. The prior vehicle was around 9,000, so you can see the difference there. That loading caused a lot of problems with the previous vehicle, tires and axles and other things.
The previous one, I think, was 9,600.
Yeah, it, it was grossly undersized for its use. And who knows the history behind that? Whether or not its role changed after it was brought in, I don't know, but this is the right vehicle for the task that it's involved with.
Now, Mr. Schuler, of course, everybody knows what GBW is. But for the sake of...
Gross vehicle weight.
Thank you.
And that was one of the concerns in the, in the document.
Thank you.
I keep forgetting about things like that.
Are there any other questions on this item? Well then, hearing no further discussion on this matter, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on 2512?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 11?
Ordinance number O-3-12, matter of adapting an amendment to the Berkeley City Code, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 1 through 7(c) and Chapter 122, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 122 through 61 through 122, I'm sorry, 122-61 through 122-63.5, to adopt MCL 257.6251c by specific reference and to readapt the Michigan Vehicle Code by reference. First reading, set date certain May 7th, 2012.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 312 with the date certain of May 7th?
Motion to approve with the date certain of whatever you just said, May 7th?
Support.
It is being moved by the Mayor Protam and support by Councilmember Kadek. Mr. Sess?
Council, you may recall, we did discuss this item at a work session, item at the last meeting. And I know that our, our, our city attorney, he is the one that's instrumental in putting this together for us, and I think he did an excellent job. I know that both our Director of Public Safety and Chief Ashman and my... meeting, and I know that our city attorney, he is the one that's instrumental in putting this together for us, and I think he did an excellent job. I know that both our Director of Public Safety and Chief Ashman and myself are supporting this and are recommending this as well to our city council. I don't know if Chief Ashman would like to add anything before we start, but if not, then I will ask our city attorney to just go over it very quickly and explain what we're looking at. Now, you may recall, at our last hearing, we talked about the super-drunk ordinance, as we call it, or the high BAC. So with that, Your Honor, I'd like to turn it over to our city attorney to review this, please. Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you very much. Basically, I think, I don't want to reiterate everything that I stated at the last, at the work session. I'll just try to condense it. Back in 2008, the state enacted a new statute which would basically be the high BAC, super-drunk law. So we've had this law for the last four years. It deals with when somebody is driving drunk twice the legal limit, or more than twice the legal limit. Currently, the legal limit in Michigan is .08. It has been for more than a decade, probably 15 years now. It was a statute designed to help curtail the problem of drinking and driving. This statute was a very good idea on paper, but very difficult for the cities to follow through with it. They still were able to, but we had to go through, Oakland County prosecutor do that, which basically caused the public safety several additional man-hours to do something like this. Governor Snyder passed a statute, an act, just a few months ago that allowed cities to prosecute these type of cases. It's just designed that allows the city to prosecute these cases with the same penalties that the state would. It's a law that is already existing. It just allows us to handle it a little more efficiently. Any questions?
Any questions for our attorney? I know this item was discussed thoroughly at the last council meeting, and I suspect we have exhausted all the questions. So therefore, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on Ordinance 312?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's agenda, and I believe Councilmember Baker is up first.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was Irma Bombeck, American humorist and author, who once said, "Volunteers are the only human beings on the face of the earth who reflect this nation's compassion, unselfish caring, patience, and just plain loving one another." Again, that's volunteers are the only human beings on the face of the earth who reflect this nation's compassion, unselfish caring, patience, and just plain loving one another. And I offer that tonight as we begin the National Volunteer Week. It actually started yesterday on the 15th and continues through the 21st. As has been mentioned many times over many meetings for many years, the volunteers offer so much of their time, of their caring, of their patience, to help the city be all that it is, and we have an even brighter future ahead because of the volunteers that do so much for us. So thank you to all of you who, again, who do so much for all of us. I'm sure all of us agree with those sentiments to help supplement what we do. So thank you. Speaking of volunteers who do great things, earlier we talked about some of the businesses on Coolidge. Many of them have formed a coalition or a group called the Coolidge Collection. Many of you have hopefully had an opportunity to frequent some of those shops. They just put a brochure together, and I brought a few copies for us here. Pass those along, and I'll hold one up. These are available at any of the shops at the Coolidge Collection, a series of businesses up and down Coolidge. And what I celebrate about this, first of all, is again, the opportunity for these businesses to come together, to understand that as a region, as an area, they're stronger when they help support one another in addition to their own businesses. And I applaud that thinking. I think that's a great reflection of Berkeley's values, the fact that we care, the notion of the caring, the patience, and the support for one another that our volunteers do. I think it's great to see our business community doing that as well. So we have such terrific organizations and businesses throughout the entire city, and I would certainly encourage you to find any and every reason to frequent as many of them as you can. And when those reasons take you along this part of Coolidge, please consider going to check out the Coolidge Collection and grab a brochure and help support them and see if we can continue to even grow this. And one last quick thought on the transit stuff. I know we've already talked a lot about that tonight, so I'll try to keep this brief. But in the notion of, in the past couple of conversations, we've talked about the positive benefits to property values with transit in the region. We've talked about the positive benefits to the Dream Cruise, to the cruisers, if we were to have public transit as part of our system. And I thought about some of the comments made earlier with the youth and the next generation and their passion and their desires. And as a matter of fact, another report came out. I don't have a paper copy of it, but it is available, and I'd be glad to help make this available to anyone as well. It's called "Transportation and the New Generation." It's about 50-something pages, and it does a study, and its subtitle is "Why Young People Are Driving Less and What It Means for Transportation Policy." And as was mentioned earlier, this document highlights key points about how folks going through school and coming out of school are making different kinds of decisions about where they want to live and how they want to get around, and needing a car to get from point A to point B isn't always part of that conversation. And obviously, we want to ensure that folks are safe when they drive. I applaud some of the comments and work that we're doing in other means to ensure safe transit. And when you think about, you know, laws that we have about texting while driving, well, some of this generation, driving is a distraction to texting, so the ways that they can to not have to, you know, interrupt their conversation and things, they find other ways to help get them safely from here to there. So this is an excellent study backed by many kinds of research and surveys and input and case studies and things like that. So if anyone's interested on that topic, I'd be glad to make that available as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Well, I have one thing tonight. This Friday, April 20th, is the annual tin can auction at the high school. This, I think, is one of the premier events in Berkeley. It's, interestingly enough, I think it's the 11th annual year for this event, and it's also the 11th annual year for our art bash. The tin can auction has a number of donated items from businesses, from families, and so on and so forth, usually between 600 and 700 items. And you buy your tickets for a dollar, and you put as many as you want in each can of the item you want to bid on. And then at the end of the evening, or actually midway through the evening, they start pulling numbers, and, you know, if your number is drawn, then you win that prize. But it's a very exciting thing. It's an annual event for me and three of my grandkids, so I have to save up for this event. And, but it's Friday, this Friday, starting at 5:00 until 10:00 at Berkeley High School. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Plaid Onson?
Couple of very quick things. One, just a reminder that, yes, I can do quick, that this Friday is the last day for the spring tree planting program, so contact DPW if you'd like to get a tree for $55 if you're going to plant it in the easement, or $65 in your own yard. Mother Nature keeps giving us reasons to replace our trees, and today's windstorm was another occurrence of that, so please consider taking advantage of that program. And then also, just a reminder to our residents that if you have any questions about ordinances as they stand, all of that is available, searchable on the Berkeley website, berkeleymish.org. You can find information about the, you know, how long your neighbor's grass can be before you can report that, what noise ordinances, times and things might be. So if you have questions, go to the website for that. And then finally, as a person who's worked in digital marketing for quite a long time, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Four-Square Day. Today is 4/16, so if you haven't unlocked your Happy Four-Square Day badge, there's still time to check in somewhere. Thanks.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday, we had the animal, excuse me, rabies clinic at the firehouse, and I want to thank our city clerk and deputy city clerk. They worked very hard during this event. We had 170 animals come through, which is a 30% increase from last year, and it was a lot of fun, a lot of noise. On a sad note, Berkeley lost a good friend in Ann Bowman. Ann Bowman was a co-founder of Mom's Club, and many of you may know her daughter, Lisa Baker, who's followed in her mother's footsteps, and is the chair of the tin can auction this year that Councilwoman Stedman spoke about. So my condolences to Mr. Bowman and the entire family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sessom?
Just a few comments, Your Honor. I know that the tin can auction, I know Councilmember Stedman seems to go away with most of the...
No, 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 we went away with nothing last year.
I don't know about that, but it is fun. It is fun. It's a lot of fun, so I encourage everybody to please, please join us there. It is a lot of fun, as she said. And then again, as Councilmember Plaid Onson mentioned, our website, again, I encourage our residents to please subscribe to our website, and you can get a report from the mayor. He gives a monthly newsletter, and he provides us, or residents, all kinds of information, all the latest and greatest happenings in the City of Berkeley. So again, our website address is www.berkleymish.org, so please sign up for that. And then I, too, would also like to express my appreciation to our city clerk, Cheryl Prince, for doing just an outstanding job at our animal clinic. That was awesome. It was a great success and a great job, and I heard both she and the city clerk had a lot of fun with all the pets out there, so thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda?
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have one item I would like to express the condolences of the city council and the residents of the city to the family of Mayor George Kuhn, who was buried at Roseland Park Cemetery today. Mayor Kuhn was elected mayor of the City of Berkeley in 1960 and later went on to represent West Bloomfield in the Michigan Senate, and then spent 30 years as Drain Commissioner for Oakland County. May he rest in peace. And now, Ms. Prince, would you read item number 12?
Closed session, matter of recessing to a closed session to discuss the city manager's evaluation.
Is there a motion to recess to closed session?
Motion to recess.
Motion to recess by Councilmember Baker.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Before we take the vote, I'd like to alert the members of the media here this evening and the residents in the audience that when we return after the recess, we will simply return to adjournment, so there'll be no additional business.